Okay, good evening. Welcome everyone to the December 2nd, Wednesday, December 2nd caucus and work session at Albany County Council. JR, would you just kind of call out who's here?
Sure can. So present from staff is myself, Michelle Andre, Danielle Gillespie, Brett Williams. Council members present are Councilmember Kimbrough, Councilmember Ballerin, excuse me, Councilmember Fahey, Council President Ellis, Councilmember Farrell, Councilmember Flynn, Councilmember Igo, Councilmember Love, Councilmember O'Brien, Councilmember Anani, Councilmember Conti, Councilmember Frederick, Councilmember Hoey. And that is it.
Okay. Thank you. You get Darius, you get the treasurer? He's here.
And City Treasurer, Darius Shinafar.
Okay. Hi, Darius. Okay, so, so welcome. What we're going to do is we have the folks from CNA here tonight for to review and give a presentation on the audit. We're going to go through our regular agenda and then, and then we'll have them on. It shouldn't take that long to, to go through the agenda. All right. So just, did I forget anything? Oh, excuse me. Dr. Clear's is also here. I don't know if, if JR, you had mentioned that and we have the folks from CNA here with us also. So but just getting into the agenda. Starting out for approval of met, excuse me. Approval of minutes for, for the, from a previous meeting, we'll have the November 16th council meeting minutes, we often offer those for approval. Okay, under consideration of local laws, there are none but under held in our active agenda. Our agenda item number eight, which is local law N will be up for consideration. There's a law committee meeting tomorrow night where they'll be discussing it and depending, pending the outcome of that, it will, will be moving it. Okay, so that's under local laws. On to ordinances, there are no new ordinances introduced, but under ordinance is held. We'll have.
I'm sorry, didn't you have a new one? Forty-two, one, twelve, twenty?
That was last, we did that last meeting that was supposed to be removed.
Okay.
It got, it got introduced last month.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so under ordinances held. Agenda item number fourteen by Mr. Ballerin, Love Robinson Frederick, what was the number? It's regarding changing the minority women utilization rate. That's twenty, ordinance twenty-four, one oh one twenty. That was amended. That passed out of the Human Resource, Human Rights Committee and we'll be moving that also. That's agenda item number fourteen, which is ordinance twenty-four, one oh one twenty. Any questions?
And Kelly, on agenda item eleven, that's assigned to the planning committee. I was wondering if we could get a meeting on that. It's a zoning map change.
Yes, we'll, we'll set something up, Mike.
Okay.
Okay. You guys work that out with Michelle. Thank you. Okay, where was I? Next ordinance is held by Mr. Conti. It's going to be agenda item number six. It's ordinance forty-five, one twenty-two, nineteen. That'll be in the law committee tomorrow and pending the outcome will be voting on that on Monday. That's agenda item six under ordinances. Any questions, comments? Concerns? Okay. On to next on to resolutions.
Did you have number item thirteen, the, the Hen ordinance was that?
Oh, no, no, I got it. It's right here on my list. Thank you, Richard. Yeah, thirteen, that's, that'll be in the law committee tomorrow night also. So that'll be up for consideration. That's twenty-three, one oh one twenty by Mr. Home. That was it for ordinances. Onto resolutions introduced. Number one twelve by Mr. Anani. You want to say something quick, Mr. Anani? You here?
Yes, I am. I'm actually not looking. Hello?
You're on, yep.
Yeah, yeah, with the coronavirus pandemic that is going on, I believe that this is not a time for individuals to be deported, going the United States government to deport individuals. So I think it is, it's important that as a county council, we send a clear message that in these challenging times with this virus that's going on, that that the US government look at ways to hold individuals here. So we don't deport to spread the, the virus all across to make it a global pandemic. So to try to hold deportation right now. So I think it's important that county council members support and to send a message.
Okay, members comfortable with moving that on Monday? Any co-sponsors? Show of hands. Me, myself. Can you see this, Michelle? Or we'll get, we'll get a list together of the co-sponsors. Okay?
Yeah, people could co-sponsor on the floor like when it comes up.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but if we were all going to co-sponsor, then that changes the way we would do it. Okay, but so we'll be voting on that. Next is resolution one thirteen, one twenty-one, twenty R by Ms. Farrell. Ms. Farrell, you want to? You're, you're a little fit, you're a little low, your voices, your volume's low, we can't hear.
A lot low, can't hear.
But Howard Stoller has been president of the, of Kena, the Council of Neighborhoods Associations for, I believe, twenty years now. And he is finally stepping down. His last meeting might be tonight. So this is to thank him for his many years of service to the city.
Okay, right. We'll be passing that on Monday. And if we're all co-sponsors, we can, everyone knows Howie, right? For years, we've dealt with him and anyone not want to be a co-sponsor. I think we're, I think we're all in, Michelle. So. Okay, thank you. Next, resolution one fourteen, one twenty-one. Twenty R, Mr. Conti, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think most members are co-sponsors of this. This relates to a, a drug rebate program that actually benefits safety net providers under the Medicaid program that allows them to reinvest savings back into services in the community. And there's a provision that was adopted as part of the state budget effective next April one that basically would divert these funds from safety net providers into the general fund as an offset to Medicaid. That would have a significant impact on the availability of services. And so there is a statewide coalition efforts involves safety net hospitals, community health centers, Ryan White providers that's working to try to reverse this or actually or put it off for a few years to try to develop some alternative proposals in our area, you know, like Whitney Young, the Damian Center are among those who are benefits, beneficiaries of this program. So this basically is, you know, the coalition is looking for support from local legislative bodies like ours. There are other local legislative bodies that will be considering a resolution like this. And it's just trying to build up the support to try to get the governor and legislature to reverse or pull back on the proposal. As I say, I think I have, I think most members are co-sponsors. So I'd like to try and move it on Monday if it's good.
Yes, yes. Well, all members co-sponsors?
Yeah, the only people I didn't hear back from were Mr. Johnson and Mr. Robinson.
Okay.
I'll be a co-sponsor.
Okay, how about you and Mr. Johnson?
You're on mute.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Great. Okay. All right. Next is resolution one fifteen, one twenty-one, twenty R by Ms. Farrell and Finance for, do you want to speak to that? It's you want to go ahead or?
I'll move closer again. This is basically they had a contract with the police, the Police Supervisors Association, and this is to fulfill that contract to ensure that their the wage increases are covered.
But thank you, Jenny. Were you trying to say something, Jack? No? Okay, all right. And are members comfortable with moving forward it or send it to finance?
We have a finance meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay, that's, that's good.
It does, we, we do need to pass it by on the twenty-first, our next meeting. Because it does need to go through, there is a timeline for it. But the Budget Department is fully aware of our timeline and, and we have a meeting on the seventeenth, so we'll be able to discuss it then. A finance meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, referred to finance. Next resolution by me, it's one sixteen, one twenty-one, twenty R. So establishing standard workdays. We've done this with other members earlier in the year. This is being done for Ms. Frederick. It's, it's the same process we went through before for every, for everyone else who had to do this. So if members are comfortable, just pass it.
Yeah, I just have a question. Like, no problem with it. It's basically that's what we're required to do. Are we required to do one also for the city auditor since that's, since there's a new person in that position?
We are, and the city auditor and I are working on it. She's in the process of putting together her record of activity. As of now, I don't have it yet, but we'll have that done probably by the next meeting.
Okay, no problem. Thanks.
Thanks, Richard. Thanks, Danielle. Okay.
So and on, before you move on to the held, I think I'm going to have an MC for Monday also. Which I'm working on. And this relates, people are aware of Harold, I know most people probably know or familiar with Harold Rubin, who just passed away Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Significant person in the community, neighborhood, et cetera. I'd like to do a resolution just recognizing Harold in mourning his death, expressing sympathies. So I will try to get that out tomorrow. But I'd like to do that and try and pass that for Monday if that's, if everyone's okay with that. Okay.
Yes, this is what is more appropriate to have an MC, Richard.
Okay.
Unforeseen. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
All co-sponsors?
I'd be happy to add everyone as a co-sponsor if anyone's.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so now on to resolutions held. So we'll, we'll be doing the resolutions one oh four through one oh nine for the appointments to the BZA that, that that's again, resolutions one oh four, one twelve, twenty through one oh nine, one twelve, twenty. For those appointments, they, they've but they went before the planning board and came out with a positive, excuse me, planning committee and came out with a positive recommendation.
Kelly, can I ask a question? Richard also has a resolution.
Excuse me, I just need to note that I'm going to be recusing myself from this, including the discussion and caucus.
Okay, oh, question. Richard was going to have a resolution reducing the size of the BZA. So we'll be appointing more people than potentially the size of it is going to be. So I thought we were going to hold off on.
No, Mike, we had a discussion about that and it was agreed that that, you know, there is a good chance, there is a good chance that that makes sense to reduce the size of the BZA. But we would do it through attrition. There's a couple of people whose terms end next year. So and then, and then, so you've been at least a couple of people, at least one. You know, may not be interested in continuing. So that's been decided that that's how we'll do it if Richard's legislation passes.
Yeah, the administration is on board on the planning department. Well, the administration's on board with going ahead with the reduction. And I believe that they anticipate people cycling off next year. So we'll just have to tweak the legislation. But it, it's something that plan to move forward with.
But there, but there's two of the board members who are only appointed for three weeks.
Um, maybe Brett can explain that because they're being
I mean, is it even worth?
Appointed for their, a term that expires at the end of this year. And then they would be appointed for a three-year term is because we're so, they are so behind on submitting these that the, the, it's, it's just all messed up. But and I, while I'm on, I believe that one of the terms from the original was supposed to be changed to get the staggering back in order.
Yes, and we, we, we did talk about that and it was agreed that that particular term was going to be reduced to twenty twenty-two, Richard.
Right, I don't get which one it was, but.
Yeah, I have it in my notes here, but I don't have it in.
Yeah, I'm not sure to do it now.
When you do find that council member Fahey, could you let me know? Because I, I didn't hear which person that was supposed to be.
Okay, sure, I'll send you a note, Brett.
And otherwise, Richard pretty much explained the situation.
Okay.
Well, we're going to do it, Mike.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we were definitely reducing. That was an issue we're just trying to figure out.
Oh, it was. No, it was actually, I have down here Paige Barnum. She's one of the new appointees. We originally had it for twenty twenty-one. And it should expire twenty twenty-two. So that was what was agreed on. Brett.
Okay, thank you.
Just as long as all the staggering works out.
And so that, that's.
I, I do have another question on a resolution which is not here, and maybe Jenny can answer. We, do we need to do a resolution this year setting the the, the base homestead base proportions?
We do, yeah, we talked about it in leadership and we do, yes.
Well, that means we're not going to get it for this meeting. And so it'll be introduced on the twenty-first and passed on the twenty-first?
Possibly. I don't know. I think that it seems to come from Darius's office, so hopefully they'll have something for us.
I think it comes from the assessor's office, but yeah, it comes from the assessor.
Okay. Yeah, I, I thought these were, I thought this was already passed with the budget, but I don't believe that's the case right now. And, and we do need to get them done and hopefully by Monday.
You need to do it before the tax bills go out.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's for sure. And so the county, the county has to pass its resolutions for the localities as well, and they're doing that in the twenty-first. If you want me to talk about the other things that we're going to ask to be put on.
That sounds like you're going to be, we're going to be having more MCs for Monday?
Yes, I believe so.
Potentially. It's, we talked about it in leadership and, and said, you know, we're
well.
Here we are.
Right, right. And Brett, you'd mentioned that Darius might have something. So at this point, since we're at the end of this, go ahead, Darius.
Okay, yeah, well, it's just, it really, it's just the standard resolutions that need to be passed by the council that we do every year. What we have is the re-levees for demos on delinquent water bills and for DGS charges. We are going through them, we're finalizing them in our office right now. They don't have the exact amount yet. They do have rough amounts for them. In part because we're also going through the process of checking the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty waste collection fee bills that have not, that, that are still delinquent that we're putting onto the tax bill for next year. Although not as a re-levee, so we don't need to have a resolution from the council. As well, as well as putting other twenty twenty-one bills as well to also add those to the tax bill for next year. But all that, all the mechanics of that need, do need to be passed as soon as possible. But again, it's, it's really standard. Standard resolutions that we go through every year. I can forward the list of the delinquent bills if people want. Hopefully by Friday, we'll have it all cleaned up and ready to present. There shouldn't be too many changes to it. Regardless. I think we, we have about one point eight million dollars in demo charges currently. Delinquent demo charges, three point one five million delinquent water charges, which is actually a little bit lower than, than usual.
We do have a committee meeting on the seventeenth where we can discuss this more.
Does this have to be done before the county acts on the twenty-first?
Yes, and so, yeah, and, and again, you know. The, this is really, it's really standard and done every year. It's because of the way the meeting's set up this year. That it makes it a little bit more difficult where the county and the city are having their meetings on the same, same night. We also have the bid resolutions that are going to come through, but the bids have not passed their budgets yet. So we are, and I spoke with the county and we'll be able to get those in for the twenty-first. But again, it's, it's, you know, these are standard resolutions that are passed every year by the council. Nothing too surprising or shocking. It's just kind of a rote.
Yeah, it is still important for us to get the information, even if it's something that we get every year, we still have to be able to go through it. And it is best to have time for that.
Maybe somebody can walk it on the, on the twenty-first from City Hall to the county. Once it's certified.
So well, I'll provide what I can by the end of the week. Okay. As well as what we get from the, from the assessor's office, but the earlier the better. And I don't think there's much really, you know, there's not a heck of a lot to discuss, I think, generally. We haven't really had much to discuss in the past several years. I can provide the list of the delinquent bills that we have right now. Outside of that. I'm not sure what other questions.
You know, you might want, we might want to consider doing a caucus a little bit earlier on Monday if you think there might be additional questions on it.
We can do that.
It's a good idea, Richard. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, thank you. And Darius, you're going to make sure we have that stuff by at least Friday, right? Yeah, so members can go through.
I can give you, I, I can forward what you have, what we have right now. I don't think there's going to be many changes. Do it.
It would be great. The sooner we can get it, the better.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll have Deb send it out tomorrow morning. I'm not exactly at my computer these days.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Darius. So with that, I mean, that's, that's the agenda. What we'll do is unless you had something, Jenny, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Clear's and CNA. Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. Clear's and the folks from CNA for the presentation, so.
Thank you, President Protemp. So good, good evening, everyone. Good evening, colleagues, and thank you for the opportunity to present on the a final APD racial bias audit report. There's so much that can be said, but if you're like me, you've been on Zoom calls all day. And so I don't want to belabor the presentation or delay it. So if there are any questions about the process. I initiated the audit three months ago, nearly three months ago. So a lot has transpired between the initiation of the audit and where we are today. And so I'm happy to talk about what all has happened. And so at the end, if there are questions about our process or things that were uncovered during the process, we can talk more in depth at that time. So with that, I just want to acknowledge the fact that we have from my office, my deputy chief city auditor, Petros Hylla. And from CNA, we have Zoe Thorcaldson and her colleague Bridget. I think Bridget is still on here. Okay, maybe we lost Bridget. Oh, there she is, Bridget Bryson. She's still there. And so they will tag team as necessary, the actual presentation. We released the final audit report today, so it was had off the press. However, the preliminary report was shared. And with the exception of some minor changes based on community input, you all had access to the preliminary report. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Zoe, so that we can begin the presentation.
Great, thank you very much, Dorsey. So I'm going to go ahead and share a brief PowerPoint presentation with all of you. So as Dorsey said, we're here presenting tonight regarding the Albany, New York Police Department racial bias audit. My name is Zoe Thorcaldson. I'm a senior research scientist with CNA. We're a research and analysis organization headquartered in Virginia. I'm joined here tonight with my, by my colleague Bridget Bryson. And then I also want to acknowledge the other team member who was part of the audit, which is retired chief Bill Taylor from out of the Lowell, Massachusetts Police Department. So brief introduction, these are the topics that we covered in the audit. Some of these were included in the initial RFP that the city of Albany released, and some of them we added as we were collecting data and as themes emerged. So these include patrol operations, complaints and civil rights lawsuits, use of force, community policing, recruitment, hiring and retention, oversight and accountability and training. And this is how the report is organized and structured. We drew data from a number of different sources, policies, administrative data and interviews, and then conducted a combination of different types of analysis, including policy review and gap analysis, quantitative and qualitative analysis. Tried a little bit more detail about our data sources. So we requested and received all one hundred and thirty-one general orders from the Albany Police Department. Of those, we identified eighty-four that were relevant to the audit. So an example of something we didn't review would be, for example, policies for refueling department vehicles, which just is not something we need to review for the purposes of this audit. Of those eighty-four, thirty-five, we deemed either particularly important or complicated and had those reviewed by two team members. And then the other forty-nine were reviewed by a single team member. We also took a look at past recommendations for reform that have come from a variety of different community groups, strategic planning documents, and then training topics. This would include the current academy training curriculum, as well as the last five years of in-service training topics that have been covered. We conducted twenty-four semi-structured interviews. Twelve of these were with APD personnel. As you can see, we had a pretty wide swath and diverse representation from different levels and assignments in the police department. We also interviewed two former APD personnel, and I wanted to thank Mr. Kimbrough for making connections for us on that regard. We also spoke with ten community leaders and community members, again, representing a diverse group of organizations operating in the city of Albany. I'm going to also note that we did keep an open email account that was available for community members to submit comments, both before the public comment period and then after the, during the public comment period as well. And we received a number of comments that way. um, both before the public comment period and then after the, uh, during the public comment period as well, and we received a number of comments that way. For quantitative data from the police department and the city, we had, uh, eight data sources that we looked at, listed here on the side. Um, for most of these, we analyzed five years of data from 2015 to 2019. Uh, but as I'm sure many of you are aware, uh, there was a data loss in the police department that resulted in the loss of 2018 data for particular databases, and those included the use of force and the community complaints data. So for those, what we did is we tacked on the year-to-date 2020 data, um, so that went through basically October of 2020. So I'm going to touch on a few data highlights before getting into our findings and recommendations, because, um, these data highlights in particular, uh, both emphasize the disparities that we found in, uh, particular law enforcement actions, as well as our sort of critical data results underpinning some of our findings and recommendations. So one thing we heard from a lot of community members during our interviews were concerns about the use of the resisting arrest charge by Albany Police Department officers. Um, so community members expressed concerns that this charge was being used in a disproportionate way. And when we do look at, um, black community members as a proportion of all arrests versus black communities as a proportion of arrests for resisting arrest, we do see that the data bears out this concern. So, black community members represent 66% of arrests in general, but they represent 76% of the arrests for resisting arrest. And, uh, on the, you know, coming into it, you would not assume that there was a reason to expect this pattern would be present in the data. There's no, uh, priori assumption that black community members are more likely to resist arrest. Um, so this disparity does provide suggested evidence of bias, be it implicit or explicit. We also reviewed complaints and civil rights lawsuits, um, looking at the race of the complainant. So, um, there is a substantial number of complaints, these are complaints from the community about, um, APD actions or officers. Um, there's a substantial proportion, 28%, where the race is not known. Um, but of those where the race is known, you can see that, um, black complainants make up 44% versus white and Hispanic being 25 and 3% respectively. Um, so depending on how you would assume the unknown was broken down, you would still see there's a fairly substantial disproportionality between white community members and black community members making complaints, where black community members are almost twice as much of the proportion of complainants. Similarly, when we look at civil rights lawsuits, and I should note that the number of these is not a substantial number over the course of the period we looked at, we looked at five years of data. But you again see this disproportionality where in 67% of these cases, the complainant was black versus, um, about a combined total of 40% that was not. Um, and, um, I should note that this is, um, civil rights lawsuits filed against APD, so not all civil rights lawsuits against the city in general. We also reviewed use of force incidents regarding the race of the community member involved in the incident. And so when you consider, um, the combination of incidents and community members, understanding that some incidents involve more than one community member, you do see that the involved community members, uh, 63% of those are, uh, black community members, um, compared to the other race categories. Um, so again, this is an over-representation based on what you might expect based on the population of the demographics of the city of Albany. But another way of looking at, um, particularly use of force is you want to consider the proportion of law enforcement action, interactions that community members have with the police, uh, sort of the baseline. So one common way to do that is to consider arrests as a baseline and compare use of force incidents to those total interactions in the form of arrests. So to do this, you develop what's called a comp- compound ratio, which has a very straightforward interpretation. So once you divided out the two percentages, so basically the percent of, uh, use of force over total interactions for black community members versus use of force over total interactions for white community members, as shown in the, uh, formula to the right, what you find is that, um, black community members are 1.2 times more likely to be involved in use of force incidents than white community members when you're considering what you would expect based on their, um, likelihood of being involved in arrest incidents. And the last data highlight, um, we did hear a lot from the community about concerns that the department is not a representative of the community and doesn't reflect the community's demographics very well. And, uh, so we took a look at personnel data provided by the city and police department, and indeed did find that this is, um, there's a substantial, uh, discrepancy between the Albany Police Department's racial demographics and those of the city of Albany, with, um, overall the Albany Police Department being 78% white personnel. And then when you break that down by sworn versus non-sworn personnel, you actually see that discrepancy increase for sworn personnel. Um, so as you can see in the chart to the right, um, the area where, um, minorities are more likely to work is in the non-sworn personnel, so support and administrative types of roles, as opposed to officers and supervisors that the community would be interacting with on the day-to-day basis, where you do see that, um, 82% of sworn personnel are white. Uh, so now I'm going to move into highlighting a few of the findings and recommendations from the report. Um, I would just encourage, um, if anyone has a question, you should feel free to jump in while I'm presenting these. I think it's a little easier to have the conversations while the slide is still up, um, rather than necessarily having to hold everything to the end. I mean, I'm just going to pick out, um.
Zoe, so with that said, um, just want to see if there were any questions about any of the data points that were brought up thus far.
Yeah, I, I have a question. So, for, for the, uh, for the resisting, uh, that, those charges, did you look at underlying or, or the main charges?
No, so we, the data we received only had the primary reason for arrests. So if there was a resisting arrest charge, we weren't able to dig into what the, the, the preliminary charge was. That is something we suggested to the police department, um, that they should delve into, uh, upon receipt of the report, um, so that they can understand, um, what those preliminary charges were.
Right, right, because you kind of miss what's going on, not that there's anything nefarious going on, if you don't know. I mean, resisting, I mean, you'd have to be resisting a lawful arrest for, um, a charge, another charge. So.
Yes.
But we, but we don't have that data.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Frederick.
Thank you, a quick question on the qualitative interviews that you conducted. Um, they're definitely diverse in terms of occupation, but I'm just curious, was any other, uh, contributing factor factored in when selecting those interviewees?
Um, so we selected those sort of in coordination with the police department and then with Dorsey. So the police department for the police personnel interviews and Dorsey for the community interviews. Um, for the police department, we, we did have a number of selection criteria, um, so things like, um, we wanted to interview people who'd been with the department for less time and for more time. Um, individuals who had been recently promoted, so we could get perception about promotion processes. Individuals in certain specialty units, uh, individuals at different ranks. Um, and then, um, but we didn't consider demographics in terms of race or gender or age. And then with the community interviews, those were, um, you know, mostly selected and facilitated by Dorsey. So I, I could let her, uh, just talk about a little bit how she considered those selections.
Sure, and, um, Sonya, feel free to, if you have a specific question. But, um, an email was distributed to, um, uh, folks in my network and then asked that, that particular request go out to individuals in that network to, uh, to solicit folks to, uh, who would be willing to participate in the interviews. And so we had a variety of different, um, community folks respond. Um, one, there were a few council, uh, members who actually, uh, participated, so thank you all for that. Uh, but it, it ranged from, uh, folks who lead, uh, community-based organizations in the city who advocate on behalf of residents throughout the community. There were, um, just community members who don't hold any specific title, uh, clergy, we had a, a few clergy, uh, respond. So the, the occupations varied, age, um, varied, um, there were, um, we touched on the retired officers, there were a few who actually proactively reached out to me and said that they heard about the audit and wanted to, were, were happy to participate. So it varied. Any specific questions?
No, I think that's helpful, I was, uh, I guess the gist of my question was wondering if, if race was a factor in the racial bias audit for the selections, but it sounded like it hit a diverse group, uh, regardless if that wasn't an initial qualifier, so.
Yeah, and I will say that there were, um, non-black, uh, individuals who said, you know, I don't know if I'm the best person to be interviewed for this, and, um, I made it very clear that we wanted everyone, if you're a resident in, in the city, this is something that impacts you, you may have experiences or you've heard of experiences. So we welcomed everyone to participate. So the, uh, in terms of demographics, it was, it was pretty diverse with the exception of age. Um, I don't think we had, uh, any folks younger than, I would say, in their twenties participate.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the data highlights? All right, um, so as I mentioned, these are just a few of the findings and recommendations. Um, our report includes 61 findings and, um, 120 associated recommendations. Um, there were a few recommendations, I think six added between the preliminary report and the final report, um, based on community input, um, and feedback. Uh, we also, in an appendix, include a recommended timeframe for implementation, um, short, medium or long term. And then suggestions about, um, what types of resources are likely to be required for implementation. So things like training or software, IT support, um, funding, new personnel and so forth. And then we also wanted to make sure we left the department and the city with a good roadmap for how to do implementation, because that is certainly something that can be, um, a critical but also a challenge. So we suggested, um, specific references, um, including peer-reviewed literature, um, publications from national sources like the cops office, and then peer agencies that have, uh, worked on the same source of challenges and, um, made, um, impressive strides with addressing them, so that, um, APD is in a position to be able to reach out for assistance. So I'm going to highlight a few specific, uh, findings and recommendations. So, um, our finding five, uh, which relates back to one of our data, uh, highlights, that community members have concerns about the, um, about disparate arrests related to quality of life issues and resisting arrest charges. And so we specifically recommend that, um, because the number of resisting arrest charges over the last five years is, is not a large number, it's only a few hundred, that APD should review either all or a large sample of incidents involving resisting arrest charges, including the body-worn camera footage to make sure that, that resisting arrest charge is being used appropriately and to uncover if there are potential racial disparities, um, or anything identifiable that could explain those disparities. Um, if necessary, then they should issue additional guidance and training to make sure that charge is being used appropriately. So for example, that there is a precipitating arrest that is underway, that the community member clearly understood that the precipitating arrest was underway and that they were notified that they were being charged with resisting arrest and given ample warning, um, to de-escalate. Um, and then we were not able to analyze the quality of life, um, calls for service, they, they aren't broken out that way, but in APD's data systems. But, um, we do suggest that they should review procedures about quality of life issues. Um, and make sure that there's nothing in policy or procedures that would result in disparate actions. Um, in particular, um, you know, this would include de-emphasizing law enforcement or arrests as a, as a response to quality of life issues. So finding 19, uh, community members are mistrustful of the complaint process. Um, so we heard this over and over again in our interviews, that community members, um, don't make complaints because they don't feel like anything will be done. Um, or when they do make complaints, they're very frustrated with the process. Um, one thing we heard repeatedly was that complaints seemed to go into APD, but then no further information is provided to the complainant um, about the process or the timeline or the final disposition of the complaint. Um, so obviously this is, um, you know, creates a lot of frustration, it's, it's not good from a procedural justice standpoint or transparency standpoint. So we suggest that they need to revise the community complaint process so that community members feel safer in complaints and also know that they will receive information to follow up on complaints that they file. Um, we also noted that, um, APD currently uses two dispositions, um, office case and satisfied, which both result in no further action being taken, um, including no investigation. Um, so office cases for a case where a supervisor was made aware of a complaint by a community member, but there, no paperwork was ever filed. Um, and so that's no, that does not go any further. And then satisfied is a situation where a community member, um, brought a complaint to a supervisor's attention, but this community member indicated they didn't require any further action or investigation of that complaint, that they were satisfied by just making the complaint. Um, and it's good that APD is tracking both of these, um, a lot of agencies actually just don't track these at all. Um, they just would not consider these to be complaints because there wasn't the proper paperwork filed. But, um, I think it's important that APD follows up in these cases to ensure that the community member understands that this is how these were filed and that they're comfortable with that and don't, uh, don't expect any further action to take place. Um, so finding 30, I think, is probably one of the most substantive and important findings in the report. Um, because it reflects a, a very, um, persistent trend and theme we heard through all the interviews, um, both from police department personnel and the community. Um, so certainly APD, um, is, is known as an agency that has a commitment to community policing. They were part of the national effort to save our neighborhoods through Precision Policing Initiative focused on community engagement. Um, and it's, oops, sorry, it's present in their, um, philosophy and culture, but the commitment is not present throughout the agencies consistently, and the community doesn't feel that APD is genuinely connecting with community members in a substantive way. Uh, we identified there's a clear disconnect between intentions, policy and leadership, and the experience of the community. So associated with this finding, we made five recommendations, um, and I would note that this isn't the only finding about community engagement either, it's just the one that has the most recommendations associated with it and is sort of broadest in theme. Um, and some of these are going to be, um, challenges to, for APD to address. Um, as I'm sure you're all aware, APD is running substantially under their, um, allocated number of sworn personnel, which is part of the reason why community engagement activities have been deprioritized, um, while needing to respond to calls for service. But we start with that as sort of the one of the big things that needs to be accomplished, which is APD needs to ensure they have adequate staffing to ensure that officers can engage in community engagement activities. And we heard frustration from personnel in the department that they would be scheduled to do something that's community engagement, but then they'd be pulled back to respond to calls for service because there wasn't enough coverage. Um, we also, um, heard from some police officers, um, that after the, um, neighborhood engagement unit was established, there's sort of been a feeling among some officers that, um, now that that unit exists and they're specializing in community engagement, that other officers are sort of off the hook and don't, don't need to be doing community engagement. I know that the chief has already, um, started taking steps to addressing this and making sure that officers understand community engagement is part of all, everyone's duties. Um, but we would encourage them to continue moving in that direction and make sure that, um, those, uh, tactics that they're using, like the 20 minutes out of their patrol car are being used effectively, um, to ensure that all personnel are engaging with the community in a positive way. Um, one key aspect of community engagement that's emphasized by the cops office and also by the problem-oriented policing model is using collaborative proactive problem-solving, particularly for quality of life issues. Um, in our review of the current, uh, academy training, there doesn't seem to be a session devoted to problem-oriented policing or to, um, the SERA model, what, which is the core model for problem-oriented policing. Um, the acronym stands for, uh, scanning, analysis, response, assessment. Um, and this, of course, um, as you're all aware, this contributed to the incident on First Street, where there have been a number of quality of life calls to that address previously that potentially could have been addressed in a proactive manner, um, thus avoiding the incident that took place. Um, we also suggest that APD should increase their community policing and engagement training. Um, it hasn't been a focus point of any of the in-service training for the past several years, uh, nor is it necessarily emphasized heavily in their academy training. And that they should use a combination of in-house and outside contractors. Um, this just allows a diversity of viewpoints to be presented to police officers and also lets them hear about different ways of engaging with the community so that they can pick the ones that were, they find the most effective or that they find the most connection to. And then we did hear a lot of community members saying that they gave APD kudos for having these sort of standard, um, community engagement processes in place. So they have barbecues and cookouts, they do coffee. So they have barbecues and cookouts, they do coffee with a cop. These types of sort of frequently used community engagement procedures. But it is their impression that pretty much the same people tend to go to these events consistently and there's a lot of diversity in who APD is reaching when they hold these events. So we would suggest that APD engage in sort of newer and more innovative strategies, strategies that are community-driven. And we just heard, and I know it was just covered on the news yesterday, that the police department and the community have been working collaboratively on, not going to get the full name right, but I think it's T3C3 is the acronym. So that's a great first step, already sort of starting to hit on this recommendation and work on implementing it. So I'll pause if there are any questions on these findings and recommendations. And I know this one's got quite a few.
I get a finding on the community placing. My understanding is there's only eighteen officers now that are assigned as community police officers. And I know we we've had some great community police officers. But then to replace the last one who retired, we have replaced with a person who's going to retire in January, so he's only with us for six months. But beyond that, I'm not aware of any police presidents presence, as you say, other than the community picnics that have been in some of the uptown parks. So I was wondering if, and we used to have, I believe the city had about thirty-eight community policing positions. And quite frankly, I don't see how getting out of a car for twenty minutes without any coordinated approach for doing it is going to make much of a difference. I really think we need to get back up to that full complement of community police officers who were assigned to be regularly went to neighborhood meetings, regularly stopped in to local businesses. Because I don't see it repeating with just a squad car popping up in front of a, you know, a shop or a restaurant and spending some time socializing. I hope I'm wrong, but I really would like to see that back up to the full number of community police officers.
Yeah, and interestingly, we we had a presentation this morning for the mayor and the police chief, and this exact topic came up. And Chief Hawkins was very frank that he feels he didn't communicate as clearly as he should have about the decrease in officers assigned to NEU and that that was intended to be likely a short-term and temporary situation that was necessitated by the resource demands and the understaffing in the department. So I know he's he's planning on addressing this proactively and getting the NEU staffing back up to a level that the community feels is appropriate. And he expressed his desire to collaborate with the community about making those plans and ensuring that the community needs are met.
Kathy, yeah.
Thanks. You know, this is so, the whole thing is so frustrating when we're talking about the community policing program because it's something that's been in effect for quite a few years now. But, you know, there just seems to be this confluence of things that have happened. We lost a large number of experienced police officers to retirement at different points. And I think we lost a lot of, you know, a lot of knowledge there. And I don't think we've really recovered from that. And then you have add that to the pandemic. And then, of course, the reduced workforce as a result of those retirements. And it just seems like there's been a big hole. Because, you know, those of us who've been on the council for a while, you know, the community placing program was huge. And, you know, the work between community police officers and patrol officers was a big part of that. And there was just so much positive momentum with our program. So it, you know, I can't, I keep coming back to losing, you know, large numbers of experienced police officers. Did you take a look at that at all in the audit? That and also the issue of our police officers not being paid comparable to other areas, you know, other municipalities around here. And we lose people to other municipalities. Have you looked at that at all as far as the impact that's had on some of the issues we're facing?
So we did hear a little bit in our interviews about attrition and the negative impacts that attrition has had in the department in terms of, as you said, highly qualified officers potentially leaving for higher-paid positions and highly experienced officers retiring. We didn't do any formal analysis of pay scales. I will say that certainly the circumstance of a an urban core losing officers to its suburban nearby jurisdictions isn't unique to Albany. A lot of cities have that issue where suburban positions are seen as as more safe and sort of more simple for an officer. And often they also offer higher pay, making them pretty tempting. So I don't think this is something that APD alone is struggling with. We did take a lot of, we did look at recruitment as a major focus of the our audit findings and recommendations. And we have several suggestions about that. I do know that the chief spoke this morning that they they're hoping with the next two academy classes in 2021 that they should have a good influx of new candidates. But as you said, that doesn't make up for institutional knowledge and human capital that accrues for more experienced officers. So that's just something that APD is going to continue to have to work on is that knowledge transfer from more experienced and expert officers to new officers.
Well, is that reflected in your report at all?
Um, yeah, so we talk a little bit about, I mean, APD's training program is actually very good. The academy training is extremely thorough. We did make some suggestions for some improvements to it, but they're relatively minor. And their field training program also seems to be very well-regarded. I mean, that's a very, you know, that's a good way of having that institutional transfer. And we also noted that supervisors and the officers they supervise have very good relationships. Every many of the officers spoke about how they really felt like their supervisor was there for them and was there to answer any questions. So I think APD's got the right building blocks in place. And right now, a lot of the struggles just has to do with being so far down in numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. Was there any discussion about us training officers and them going to other other departments rather quickly? And is there any department that has some kind of contract that they have to honor a certain period? Or something happens? I don't know, it's just that just doesn't seem fair. We trained somebody and they go right out. So we're paying for other departments training. And that's that's a real issue. I don't know if that was discussed at all or if you know of any ways to stop some of that, put a timeline on it.
No, it wasn't something that came up in in our data collection. I suspect that it would be treading awfully close to the collective bargaining agreement to have any such policy. I mean, that's, it's not, I'm not a lawyer nor a legal expert. So I I don't tend to comment on the collective bargaining agreement aspect of things.
Nationally or?
I am not aware of a department that has that type of policy myself now.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. In cases involving the use of force, is what, did you have any findings or data on the disciplinary actions of the officers involved in those use of force cases? And are there any recommendations on what APD can do to mitigate those use of force incidences among officers?
So we did analyze the use of force data in terms of what the finding was in terms of, you know, was the use of force found to be within policy or not? A relatively small percentage was found not to be in policy. We did not have access to the corrective actions or discipline that was taken for officers that were found to have used force outside of policy. So we weren't able to analyze that now.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just jump in here and, you know, there there wasn't a lot of information on this. But one of the takeaways for me was this missed opportunity to address excessive use of force. So for example, when we looked at the, and it's in the report, the lawsuits, civil rights lawsuits filed against the city. And in one instance, there was an officer who was involved in four separate lawsuits in the same year. And so as I'm reading that, of course, my, the question I have is, you know, how was this officer able to continue? And what were the, you know, did someone talk to the officer? Was something going on? How come it escalated to four different incidents in one year? So as a member of the collaborative, that's been a conversation that, you know, my subcommittee is having. How do we proactively address this issue so that things aren't allowed to escalate? And you and you find that officers, the same officers are involved in multiple excessive force incidents with with community members. Zoe, can you speak to, in the report, it talks about some of the work that the department can do to just very clearly lay out and make public information about officers, the type of use of use of force incident that they may be involved in in some of those details?
Yeah, I think you might actually be getting to finding fifty, which is a few slides down. So APD does have policies requiring that they perform annual analysis on internal affairs investigations, use of force, recruitment, allegations of biased policing, and others. Currently, these reports aren't made public. So our suggestion would be that each of these general orders should be updated so that the public release of results is the expectation. With the understanding that, you know, due to personnel privacy concerns, this isn't necessarily going to include names and specifics, but every incident that they, that's something that would need to be worked out in light of the collective bargaining agreement and any legal concerns. But that at least the summary statistics should certainly be available to the community. And then also that these should be posted in perpetuity to their websites so that they're accessible and accessible going back in time. And then all of these should include a breakdown by race so that the community can clearly understand and see if there are disparities in any of these.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Great, I'm going to flip back a couple of slides.
I have a question.
Oh, is there a question?
Yes, I had a question. Did we look into the data behind minorities, you know, that leave the job, you know, for discipline reasons, disciplinary reasons? And have we looked in, because I saw, I heard Dr. Apliers mention that it was a gentleman that was involved with four different lawsuits. But, you know, as a person that's lived in this community for a long time and, you know, known minorities on a personal level, it just seems like their life is shorter, you know, when it comes to error. If you're a minority officer, your exit from APD seems to be faster than non-minority. So I just wanted to know if it was any conversations around that topic.
So we do not have data about disciplinary actions and outcomes. I mean, we do have a finding and recommendation suggesting that APD needs to start tracking those in a coordinated manner. My understanding is that those, that data currently resides in personnel files, but there isn't a consolidated database that could be easily analyzed of, you know, all discipline actions against officers. So we weren't able to look into that. I will say one thing we did hear during interviews is that not related to discipline, but that qualified minority personnel frequently leave because they feel like they hit a glass ceiling where they can't get promotions or moved into specialty assignments. And that results in them moving to other agencies. So that is one area where we heard about attrition. Unfortunately, again, APD doesn't collect that data in a systematic way. And so we weren't able to analyze and substantiate those impressions, but that we heard it from some of the personnel that we interviewed.
Thank you.
I have another question. If we can go to finding thirty point two.
Yep.
This one was probably both the most interesting and concerning to me because I feel, you know, if officers aren't willing to do the community engagement and get engaged with community they serve, it could lead to those biases that are prevalent. So I'm just curious, did you throughout your audit procedures find that officers were seeing that as a lesser role in terms of engaging with the community? Or was there any other indication that would lead to this sense of the sense in the forest that it's, you know, non-preferable or something that it's outside of their job duties if they're not a neighborhood engagement officer?
So I think there are a few things going on with that. One is that due to the understaffing, many officers feel they just don't have time. They they're running from call to call for their entire shift and they don't have the time to take to have positive community engagement. We did hear from personnel and also from community members that there seemed to be some officers that are just not bought in on the importance of community engagement, particularly that there's been some pushback about the chief's policy of getting out of the squad car for twenty minutes. Community members reporting that officers get out and lean against their car and watch their watch until twenty minutes elapses. And then they get back in their car and they've checked that box for the day, which is obviously not what the chief's intention is with that policy. I would, I would gather from the examples, we saw that this is pretty limited to some very specific individuals and it's in a widespread problem. But I think a lot of it has to do with the understaffing and the fact that there there are officers dedicated to it means that other officers feel like maybe, well, I must be dedicated to patrol and to responding to calls for service because they're dedicated to community engagement. So I think that, you know, this, it ties right back into thirty point one that inadequate staffing is really underlying a lot of these issues. And as the department gets back up to full staffing, hopefully they'll see some of these things sort of almost solving themselves because officers have more time and be able to engage in these activities.
Thank you.
So we spoke to some of the school resource officers and also, you know, just heard about the school resource officer program and wanted to commend the department that school resource officers are definitely not viewed as an enforcement portion of the police department. They see their job as working with students, encouraging positive student behavior, developing innovative programs. And in our assessment, they don't contribute to the school and prison pipeline, which is obviously something that can happen with SRO programs. We did also note that the policies about SROs really emphasize the mentorship and the mentoring aspects of the SRO role, which is great to see an agency doing as well. So I know that the lead program was something that was of particular interest to a lot of the community members who have seen this program being used and feel like it's not benefiting the individuals. It was intended to benefit. And certainly, I know that the most recently available lead data does suggest that the majority of lead referrals are going to white community members. And in the current lead policy, there is officer discretion. So officers can make a decision to refer or not refer someone on their own recognizance. So that's obviously a situation that's very ripe for implicit bias to start playing a role. And officers, you know, are potentially completely unaware of it, but they're making these decisions and are potentially causing bias in the process. So our suggestion would be that APD officers should refer all individuals meeting the eligibility criteria and not in an exclusion category to lead. And then the lead program, if necessary, can be the one that has discretion about accepting individuals into the program. Also, there isn't any data being collected currently about non-referrals to the program. So that makes it difficult to know whether the disparity is due to eligibility and exclusion criteria or is due in fact to officers' decision-making. So we suggest that they should start collecting data about both referrals and non-referrals and then regularly analyze that data. And in particular, one of the exclusion criteria is that the complainant must be willing to decline prosecution of the individual involved, which is a place where then the complainants' implicit biases could be. which is a place where then the complainants implicit biases could be resulting in disparities in who is eligible to be referred to lead. So it's another step that making sure that they're keeping track of this information can allow them to understand where in the process these disparities are cropping up and then work to minimize them.
Can I ask a quick question? Do you do you have, did you get access to information such as number of people who were referred to lead?
No, we we had access to the publicly available lead data, which I think the most recent year is several years ago at this point.
The most recent what?
The most recent year of data that was published, I think, is a few years ago. There's like an annual report posted, but there is, we didn't have access to recent data on the lead program now.
Okay, thank you.
And we did hear anecdotally that the number of referrals has decreased in the past, I think about year. But we weren't, we didn't have the data to dig into that ourselves.
I'm sorry, I just have a quick question about that, about the referrals decreasing. Is there a reason that was given as to our, a reason that was came about as to why the referrals have decreased?
No, I mean, I think that there's certainly a tendency to assume COVID is a factor in a lot of these types of situations. And I don't think that's unrealistic to assume it's least partially driving it, but I we didn't really hear any specifics about anyone having an underlying reason other than that. So as I mentioned a few slides ago, APD does have a recruitment plan, which does emphasize recruiting members of racial and ethnic minority groups. But personnel demographics in APD nonetheless do not reflect the community demographics in the city of Albany. We know that this lack of representation may at least in part be due to disparities that occur in the hiring process. So we made three recommendations regarding this. So the first is to the city actually itself, which would be to explore what options are available locally and then potentially at the state level to implement a diversity preference for hiring. So this is commonly used in a lot of police agencies, but is not currently in place in the city of Albany or the police department. This might include the possibility of moving away from the state civil service hiring system. And we did provide some references for some agencies in Massachusetts that have stepped away from the Massachusetts Civil Service Hiring System that might be helpful as resources. Or something like petitioning for a change in state legislation, stuff to the diversity hiring preference would be allowed under the civil service hiring system. We also suggest that APD implement a system to track applicants and applicant progress through the entire hiring process. So we heard anecdotally from some community members that there's an impression that minority applicants tend to fall out of the process at particular points more frequently than others. Particularly the physical fitness test was suggested as one of these. And if ABD could track this data and understand if that's taking place, that would allow them to provide responses to it. So perhaps providing supplemental fitness training or additional programs that are supportive of individuals who are struggling with that aspect. And then lastly, we also have a number of recommendations related to improving the website. But one of those would include that APD disclosed the diversity and demographics of the department on an annual basis. So the the community is aware of that and it's being put out in a transparent manner for everyone to be aware of. So I already walked through finding fifty. So finding fifty three. Currently, APD assigns research, development and strategic planning responsibilities to their training unit. And our suggestion would be to remove those responsibilities from the training unit and establish a dedicated research and planning unit. This would be staffed by a combination of sworn and non sworn personnel, potentially being majority or even primarily non sworn personnel to include individuals with specific training in research, statistics, analysis, strategic planning and other such topics. Instead of putting these in with the training unit for a few reasons, one, the training unit has enough on their plate with this handling training. And so this will allow them to focus their attention more carefully. And we're also ensure that there's a dedicated unit for doing the types of analyses that we've referred to on the previous slide. So those aren't being put on the sworn personnel and they're being done by individuals who have the requisite knowledge to be able to do them in an efficient and effective way. Another benefit of research and planning units is that often agencies will incorporate grant responsibilities under these units, including proposal development. And so this could be an opportunity for APD to be more proactive about applying for funding, particularly from the Department of Justice, the COPS Office, Bureau of Justice Assistance, or even NIJ, as well as establishing partnerships with some of the local researchers I know who work in the upstate New York area and would be very pleased, I'm sure, to have another agency that they are partnering with on these types of activities. So the final finding in the report is our suggestion that continuing to monitor and assess APD's progress towards the recommendations in the report is going to be critical to both implementation and sustainment of the changes as well as to transparency and community satisfaction. So we do recommend that if possible, the city of Albany should engage a firm to track and monitor progress towards the implementations in this report, towards the recommendations in this report. So this is something that CNA does on other projects similar to this. And certainly we would be happy to offer those services to the city if they were to proceed with this. But certainly we'd also suggest making sure that the progress and each recommendation's progress and status is available publicly. So the community can check in on where things are at and understand who's working on it. So I'm happy to take any additional questions at this point or questions about the rest of the report. Obviously, I was only able to pull out a few of our findings, recommendations to highlight.
I get a question and you didn't highlight it, but on one of the ride alongs I did with the police department about two years ago or so, one of the calls that took a lot of time was to St. Anne's Institute, which is has in-house, you know, a residential facility for court referred young women. And it was basically a fight between three three of the women there who were teenagers, basically. And it consumed at least an hour of three police officers' time. And I'm sitting there observing and thinking to myself, you know, this is a facility that's licensed by the Division for Youth and Department of Children and Family Services. And this was in no way a law enforcement call. But they called the Albany Police Department and the Albany Police Department devoted three people for at least an hour to do what I thought was social work intervention. They did a good job at it, but to me they and then talking to the officers afterwards, they said they get a lot of this. So to me, that seems like a waste of law enforcement effort on something that people who work for, you know, children and family services should be trained to do anyway. Did you get any feedback on this or or do most police departments wind up doing a significant amount of social work?
So most police departments definitely end up doing a significant amount of social work. That's that is not unique to Albany Police Department and is currently something under a great deal of discussion at the national level as well. Our audit report was pretty narrow in focus, looking at potential racial bias disparities and policies and procedures that could be contributing to that. We do, CNA also does work on things like response models and alternate models for responding to calls for service and analysis of calls for service data with that goal in mind, but it's not something that we did for this particular project.
But to me, it saps an awful lot of strength that could be going to some other community policing or some other genuine law enforcement.
No, and I I don't want to de-emphasize the importance of doing that type of analysis and understanding those problems, but it just wasn't something that was the focus of our particular scope of work.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Afraid.
Thank you. I had a quick question in your interviews with the police department. So one of your findings was that there's a sense that, you know, community policing isn't, you know, a everybody's buy-in. What other senses, what other cultural, cultural, you know, discoveries that you did you find while you were having these conversations? You know, what other, you know, mentalities did you, did you, did you observe?
Um, that's a very interesting question. I would say my overall impression is that APD is staffed by officers and personnel who are extremely dedicated to their jobs. Who have a lot of commitment to public safety, but who have understandable frustrations, particularly regarding the understaffing in the department and how that's impacted their ability to do their work and do it effectively. But the overall impression was one of of professionals and people who really care about the community and about their department and want to see changes made to continue to improve and continue to do better.
Zoe, and it's in the report also. Can you speak to some of the comments about officers feeling that they are unsafe because of lack of training or other factors?
Yeah, we do have a finding reflecting the fact that, and I think that this is this is again, is not unique to APD. This is something that's being felt very deeply by officers around the country about risk to personal safety, stress and mental wellness challenges in the current environment and policing. I mean, this is an area on the plus side that there has been a lot of work done on at the national level and by groups like the COPS Office and the Bureau of Justice Assistance. So we did provide quite a bit of information about possible resources to make sure that Albany's health and wellness efforts are as strong as possible to ensure officers do have the support they need to be able to do their jobs effectively and feel safe while doing them.
Any other questions, comments? Sonya.
Just curious, and I don't know if you're there yet, so apologies, I'm jumping the gun. But a lot of recommendations, particularly for the police department in your report. Has there been a sense of during your conversations, any receptability to making changes or anything that they're very excited to implement or modify?
Yes, definitely. So I mean, the chief definitely is wholeheartedly embracing this. And I think that in our experience, you know, no department likes to be put under a microscope and have their faults sort of put out in the public. But on the other hand, having an independent organization come in and affirm some of the concerns that they maybe have had themselves internally already can be very, I think, affirming to individuals in the department and it gives them then, you know, a document of report that says, hey, these are the things we said we needed and now another another group has come in and said, these are the things we really need. And so I think that, you know, particularly like when we were speaking to the coordinator for lead at the police department, he was really enthused about like seeing that program grow and have more done with it. So I'm sure he's going to be very excited about the recommendation regarding referring all the lead into all eligible individuals. Because he's really bought in on that program and he really wants to see it done well. And then also he really wants to see it done evaluated using like a really rigorous research methodology, which is very exciting, of course. It's also something we suggested is that APD engage in more evaluations. So I think, you know, no one is ever going to be 100% satisfied with any of these types of reports. But the impression I got and that our team got from the police department is that they're really ready to embrace these things. They feel like they're doing a good job and they're ready to just do even better.
And Sonya, I'll just answer that tomorrow morning, we actually have a presentation with the command staff. And so we will have a better sense tomorrow of some of their questions, concerns and their reactions to the presentation. And that's tomorrow at 10 o'clock in the morning. The other thing I picked up on from the chief, there's while he's embracing the recommendations, there's also this other process happening with the collaborative in which you all as counsel will vote on the police reforms that the collaborative comes up with. And so while this report and the over 100 recommendations will be a part of the discussions that the collaborative is having, I think that there's a sentiment from the mayor and the chief to want to ensure that the collaborative has their opportunity and process to develop reforms and see how what we've come up with infuses with what the collaborative comes up with. And it may be wholeheartedly adopting all of these recommendations plus more. But it appears that they want to let that process play out before it's and you all vote, of course, is crystal clear about all of the reforms that will be embraced, prioritized and implemented.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question, actually, Zoe. And this goes back to the diversity of the police force. You know, we talk about it from time to time, but it's frustrating. We know that there is always this feeling that if our police force, more of our police force lived in the city, that they would feel differently about you know, the policing that they do here with with folks who live here. And I know that, you know, we've got a state law, the public officers law that allows people to live outside the city employees. But I was wondering, since you've done, you know, you've got a lot of experience with this. Are you familiar with communities that have come up with some kind of creative solutions to encourage our police officers, more police officers to live here in the city?
Yeah. And actually, so this is actually a topic I would say of hot debate, although it's a very niche topic, so hot debate amongst a fairly small number of people is whether residency requirements are effective in in achieving the goals that they purport to be laid out to achieve. And the research evidence is very mixed on this. And so I think that there's a general pragmatic view in the field. And this is certainly the view I have that rather than having residency requirements, it's more effective to have residency incentives. So that officers aren't restricted to live in the city, but they are given some incentive to live in the city. And that can be in the forms of things like down payment assistance, even just straight salary bonuses. I've seen, those are the two ones I've mostly seen. I'm sure there are other even more creative ways of doing that. But we do suggest, and one of our recommendations is for the city to explore if there are additional incentives for residency that might be worth implementing for APD officers.
Oh, that is one of the recommendations.
Yes.
And do you know any municipalities that we can look to that are doing that type of thing?
Um, you know, it's a little outside my area of expertise, so I don't have any off the top of my head. But I mentioned this to the mayor and the chief this morning. You know, CNA is delivering this report and this does close out our deliverables to the city in terms of our contract. But we are happy to be available and make connections like that and reach out to our network of agencies to ask if anyone has worked on these issues and then bring those referrals back to the city and the police department. So we, you know, consider us a resource in perpetuity for any of these questions or anything in implementing the recommendations that we can help with.
Thank you.
Okay, any other question?
Yeah, so I have a question. So have you seen, and I know this has been asked because I'm just trying to think of a way to because at this point, when officers are sworn in, they can sign the book and move out of the city. So we need our officers to live in the city. I'm a firm believer in that. But we can't make them. Any, I was got this idea in my head about kind of instituting some kind of maybe three to five year agreement with incoming officers to to get them to stay in the city. And this, I'm not just worried about them wanting them to stay in the city because I think you tend to care more about where you live, but also I mean, But also, I mean, the state police are poaching our officers and and I know I'm going off on a tangent. But but have you seen, have you seen that done anywhere where where, you know, collective bargaining agreement aside, I mean, that would have to be a part of the agreement. But at least not impacting officers that already are on, but new officers coming in. Can we make them sign an agreement like that?
So I I wouldn't know where off the top of my head, but I know I have heard of agencies that have, like you said, a short term residency requirement. So new newly hired officers must reside in the city and they must remain in the city for three to five years. But then they are free to potentially move. So that's not, that's not an unheard of concept or idea.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions, comments? All right, so I'll just reiterate, we have a few presentations. APD tomorrow morning, we also have a community presentation tomorrow evening. You all are more than welcome to participate. This is a very, as you all know, an emotionally charged conversation. And so I've received mixed reactions to the audit from community members. And so it should be a lively conversation. That's tomorrow at 6 o'clock. And then we will also be presenting to our city court judges next week. The judges actually reached out proactively and asked the question, so, you know, we want to understand how does this audit impact our work? And so all of them agreed that they wanted a presentation. And so kudos to the the city court judges, we will be presenting to them as well. I want to publicly thank Zoe and her team. They have been able to throughout this process, maintain a very objective process, very balanced, looking at all aspects and all sides of the coin from the community's perspective, from the APD personnel perspective. And so as you dive into the report, you'll see that it's a very balanced perspective that highlights racial disparities that need to be addressed, but also some of the concerns that police officers have about their work and their work environment. The other thing I'll say is that this is the foundation for a process to achieve racial justice and eliminate racial bias. And so this provides, again, the foundation for the work that the collaborative is doing. So far, I've already received calls from colleagues across the state who are also tasked with coming up with police reforms and many of them don't know where to start. And so they heard about the audit that Albany has has undertaken and had a lot of questions. So is public information Niskiuna has already retained CNA and and CNA will be helping Niskiuna. There are other municipalities who quite frankly feel that they need to get more grounded in the data before they can more effectively come, come up with their police reform. So I want to thank again CNA for the work that they've done thus far and for continuing to be a resource to to all of us moving forward as we continue with this police reform conversation and process. If there are no further questions, I'll just let you all know that the final report is available. But I will send it to Michelle. That way you will have it as an attachment, but it's available on the racial bias webpage that my office has created. So all things related to the audit are on there from the contract to the proposal that CNA submitted. Everything that has happened thus far is on that page. And so you all have access to that. So and lastly, thank you all so much for your time and your questions and your comments tonight.
Great, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate the opportunity to make the presentation to you all. And feel free to reach out if you think of any other questions later.
Thank you very much. And so could it would be possible to get a copy of the presentation? Pretty similar to the executive summary, but it it helps add a few requests from members about getting it.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, if if members don't have anything else, we went through the agenda and the presentation. I move, we adjourn our caucus. Okay, yeah, is that a yes or no or?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
My second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, that's adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Dorsey. Thank you, CNA.
Thank you.